Perfect, okay. Welcome to the May 19th, 2025 meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commission utilizes speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on an item, please complete a speaker request form located in the back bookshelves in the back of the chambers and return it to Director Nabe, located at the lower right-hand side. So we'll do a call to order the meeting. And if we could do a roll call since I am on Zoom, that would be appreciated.
Der.
Here.
Drews.
Here.
Ross Connect.
Here.
Wyffenbach.
Here. And I think we will, we have a quorum. So we will move on to a moment of silence. And I believe it's Gary's turn to lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
It would be to my left, Mr. Drews.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Drews, yep.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And hopefully you guys can catch who that was. I believe the motion was by Drews and the second was by Der.
No, it was Ross Connect and Der.
Okay.
Made the motion.
Okay, thank you for straightening the record out. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. So we'll move on to item number six. This will be presented by Gary. And this is a welcome to the National Association of Counties, Western Interstate Region, WIR Conference hosted by Pennington County. And we'd like to thank Commissioner Drews for all the hard work he's put into this. And Gary, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me a minute to extend a welcome to those that are here already and those that are coming in for the Western Interstate Region Conference, which includes the 15 western states, including Alaska and Hawaii. We have 371 fellow colleagues that are registered for this conference here in Rapid City. And we've got five full days of events and activities for them throughout this week. Some of the pre-conference events included a number of them coming in to try to enjoy some of the golfing weather that we had a week ago. But it kind of left us for the time being. But as I told them last night, I can't apologize for the weather. We need the moisture badly. And nobody, nobody felt too bad about the fact that they got rained out and that the weather doesn't look that great this week. But it'll turn out okay. We've got some pre-conference things. Today is actually a pre-conference day. This will include a trip through the Badlands National Park. But during the course of the week, we're, we've got a lot of workshops that are planned. We'll talk a lot about forest, forests in these states and fire protection through those areas. Public lands is a big item for all of us to discuss. And so I think it's going to be a great conference. And I just appreciate all those that have come in. There's a number of them that have, have driven or are driving in to actually make it a family vacation along with it. So we appreciate their attendance and we trust that we will serve as, as good hosts for them. So thank you, Chairman, for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you, Gary. And I'd like to special, special thank you out to Joan for helping you with all that. And whoever else was involved, I'm sure you had several participate. I believe Lloyd LaFroy helped with that project. And we appreciate, look forward to those people enjoying their stay here in the Black Hills. Thank you again, Gary.
You bet.
We'll move on to item number eight. This is a consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to set.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go back to item seven.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Item seven, executive proclamation. And I'm hoping that one of you has available.
I have a copy of it.
Could you read it then, please? It's honoring Jack Dustman for 52 years of volunteerism in the fire and EMS service. And I wish I was there to read it, but I am tending a graduation in Oklahoma City for my, my oldest granddaughter. So if, if you would appreciate reading that, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I sure will. Executive proclamation, Pennington County, South Dakota, Jack Dustman Day, May 31, 2025. Whereas Jack Dustman, a lifelong resident of Pennington County, who resides on the Dustman Ranch near Caputa, has dedicated over five decades to serving the greater New Underwood community. And whereas Jack Dustman has held roles as a volunteer firefighter, emergency medical technician, and president of the New Underwood Rural Fire Protection District in Pennington County. And whereas Jack Dustman's 52 years of service exemplify Pennington County's deeply rooted tradition of volunteerism in the fire service with 96.6% of the state's fire personnel serving in a voluntary, volunteer capacity, second only to Delaware. And whereas, under Jack Dustman's leadership, the New Underwood Ambulance Service in Pennington County was recognized as the South Dakota Emergency Medical Service of the Year in 2003. Whereas Jack Dustman served as the Chair of the Pennington County Service, Fire Service Board, Assistant Fire Chief for New Underwood Volunteer Fire Department and the Pennington County Fire Coordinator. And whereas Jack Dustman was instrumental in the design, development, and deployment of the Pennington County Fire Service Communications Network, serving as a model for the state of South Dakota. And whereas, in 2021, Jack Dustman was recognized for his service with a lifetime achievement award by the Pennington County Fire Chiefs Association. Therefore, be it resolved that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners declare Saturday, May 31, 2025, to be Jack Dustman Day in Pennington County and encourage all citizens to reflect on the values of service and dedication he represents. This is to be signed by Ron Wyffenbach, Chairman of the Pennington County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to ask Jack and Val, you can, you can lead the troop up here. We'd like to be able to have a picture with Jack and family members. Come on around. We'll do it right up here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Just 52.
How are you doing?
Just 52.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does it work, Val?
Yes, yes.
Want to do it?
Here.
Good.
Can I saw a brand?
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't say anything.
Thank you.
So make the motion to approve executive proclamation declaring Saturday, May 31st, 2025 as Jack Dustman Day.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And I'd just like to say, this is with great honor. I want to sign this for this. Voluntaries are the backbone of our community, especially when it comes to the fire department. So thank you very much, Commissioner Drews, for doing that, too. Anybody else want to say anything there? Or should we go on to item eight?
Yeah, it's Commissioner Der. I'll just have a comment. And so Jack has been a neighbor of mine since I moved out there in 1986. And not only is he, you know, a, a good, a good neighbor and good for our community, but I mean, you know, like you'd mentioned, Chairman Wyffenbach, volunteerism is something that is kind of weeding away. And sometimes it's a generational thing. And, and Jack's generation and his dedication represents something that is difficult to replace. And so when you talk about, you know, you read the proclamation and that's just kind of the words about, you know, what a commitment he's made to serving his neighbors and his community. But it's, you know, you think about that and the decades of time and energy and dedication put into it. That is just something, to be fair, that we just don't see happening still in our rural areas. And so the EMS service across the state, for those that are doing that, you know, kudos to you. But it's a struggle in the EMS service across South Dakota. With volunteerism is something in the future that the county will have to look at as other counties across the state. Because they're providing, you know, an essential service that you want to talk about a bang for the buck for the taxpayers. That's one of them. And so just thanks. And I do have a question for you, Jack, if you want to come up. So 52 years. So does this mean you're not going to give 50 more?
Well, I don't intend to just go away.
All right. All right. So I know you've got something to say. So what does 52 years mean to you? And what changes have you seen?
Oh, my gosh. In 52 years, I, you know, when I, when I started with the fire service, we were in, and I'm going to talk about just Pennington County. And the fire departments were all broke, you know, using a bunch of old military equipment that was World War II and Korean War wore out. And during the time of about 1980, the, one of the former fire coordinators that we, the county had hired, Tom Rubashad. And I, I was then on the, I was chairman of the Fire Service Board. And through Tom's leadership and, and a lot of hard work between him and myself and the members of the Fire Service Board, we started putting together what's now the, the Pennington County Fire Service. And it's, it's one to be reckoned with. It's, it's the go-to for the state to, for the volunteers to be able to coordinate as a, as a firefighting force, as an EMS force. So during those formidable years where we did a lot of, of training, which wasn't, and the county commission was so supportive of that. And, and brought in, and they spent a lot of money on volunteers of getting people trained. Then the department started getting a little cash and, and new equipment. And that continues today that the county is, is so important for, for the fire service countywide to, to be kept informed, trained. And you guys play a huge role in that because that training and the, the problems, the, the new things that come on is so important for not only the community for its safety, but for the safety of the, of the volunteers. And we so appreciate that. Seeing that the county is, is still looking at that, still providing that for the, for the volunteers otherwise. And through the office of the, the fire administrator and what they do over there, finding that, that training and getting it set up and, and helping the individual fire departments with the beginning to be the mountain of paperwork that you got to do to satisfy the powers to be. It's, it's amazing to me that during those 40, at least 40 years of how I can see the way that the fire service in this county has, has come to, to be, you know, the leader in the state and the, and the go-to for, for information. And, and I know Jerome and Val spend a lot of time answering questions for, you know, the other counties in the state and not only the state, but our state, but other states. So I'm, I'm just proud to be a part of or had a little part of, of the, of the evolution of the, of the, of the fire service in Pennington County. And downright proud of what the county, the communities have, have, have done to provide the citizens with the, you know, the best quality fire protection that we can provide. And so again, I guess I think I want to thank you guys and the past commissions for being so supportive of, of, of the fire service and, and the continued support that is going to be needed in the next, in the, in the, in the future as things are changing in the county. And this county's profile has changed. So again, thank you so much for the, for the opportunity. And I so appreciate the opportunity to, again, to be a part of that. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
I got a, Jack? I was Jack.
Sorry.
You know?
Jack, come back.
I started with the Johnson Society and Fire Department back in 1978. I can relate to World War II equipment because I had a military six-by-six, 500-gallon pumper. And you just prayed that thing was going to start when you got to a house fire. And everything we had in that fire department was pretty much used, handed down from other fire, fire departments. But you mentioned Tom Rubashad. He was a good friend of mine. But did you know Corky Jacobs?
Yes.
Corky, those, those two are like brothers, you know? I don't know how many times we'd go to Yankton or Pier for training. And even one night, Governor Jangl stopped in and, and said hello. So when you go back to 1978 and I think about the equipment we have and I look at those fire departments today, there's just no comparison. So things have really changed in 50, 52 years. And thank you for your service.
Well, you know, just to follow up for a moment there on, you know, in that era, where fire departments didn't have any money, they used to come to the commissioners. And I can remember, you know, Rapid Valley out here was just struggling. They had some old piece of, a six-by-six. Well, they blew a tire on a grass fire. And they had to come to the commissions to ask for money to buy a tire. And it was that. They got that kind of desperate. Now it's so much different. And thank God for that.
Well, our largest source of income back then, back then were fireman balls. And that was our largest revenue generator. And now it's totally different. But as I said, things have changed in 50 years. And once again, thank you for your service.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for the history, too, there, Mr. Ross Connect. You always have something kind of creative to add into that, so.
I hate, I hate to think that I was around in 1978, but that's, it is what it is.
I always think of World War II.
All right, all right, you guys. We'll move on to item number eight. It's the consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. Consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda contains the following items. And therefore, is there anyone from the commission or the, or the audience that would like to remove an item from the consent? Can you guys? Nobody from the commission? Is there anybody from the audience? Nobody from the audience? So we entertain a motion on these items.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Der and a second by Ross Connect.
Drews.
From Drews. I'll let you, I'll let you guys fill in those gaps or to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for putting up with me. Item number nine, items from the public per SDCL 125-1. Speaker request form is required. A time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this section on any issues brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this section will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. So can you guys tell me, is there any speaker request forms?
No.
No speaker request forms? So we will, and there's probably, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on an item?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number 10. Black Hills Council of Local Governments in this 2024 performance report, my Jennifer Seetsma, Executive Director. So we will give Jennifer the floor and allow her to give her presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners and members of the public. I've already been introduced. Jennifer Seetsma, Executive Director for Black Hills Council. Each year, we come out to, well, all of our members, which we have 21 members, to present our draft of the 20, of the previous year's performance report. If you're not familiar with this report, or if you've never been through it, I'll, I'll talk through a few of the things and then we can have a, a back and forth discussion about some of those work items that have been done. So the member representatives, we have representatives from each of our counties and cities that sit on our board as, as basically our Board of Directors. We have executive board members. This has since changed. We had a new board elected in January. So this is the 2024 individuals who held those positions. Our staff, actually, I have Trevor Madsen with me today. He came on with us in December. So he's in the audience today. And he's been, he's just been really great. An extra set of hands for me. And he's taken on anything extra, anything we throw at him. And he's just excelled. So it's been pretty incredible to watch that. Again, this report is going to cover work activities from January 1st, 2024 through December 20, or December 31st, 2024. It's currently in draft form. So if you find any issues or, or errors, I'm happy to take that feedback and make those changes. I will add December 31st because I see I missed that on this first paragraph. For those that don't know, we're quasi-governmental organization. And we do a lot of work through, through contracts and cooperative agreements with federal and state partners, as well as our local members. And then our services provided, I'm not going to read each of those, but we provide a variety of, of services to our members and also to members or to entities that are served under our county membership. So that includes road districts, fire districts, HOAs, sanitary districts, rural water systems. A lot of those entities benefit because Pennington County is a member. So I just want you to know that by you being a member, you're providing a much greater service area and our ability to provide services to many entities other than just the county departments. So funding, it changes a little bit by year. But currently, 23.5% of our funding comes from local government dues. So we have nine counties and 11 cities that pay in. But the rest of that is secured through other contracts, through local contract work that we do and through grant and loan funds that are secured through other programs. And then I guess just kind of the overall, 86% of our budget is used for personnel. So we operate as, you know, we're pretty, we're pretty bare bones. And, and we put our, we invest our resources into our staff and having trained staff, which makes us efficient and able to respond to your needs. The following page is the highlights. So in 2024, we had 60 applications that were prepared and submitted. Successful proposals as a total for our whole region resulted in 46.5 million of outside funding. So that was from January 2024 to December 2024. We received an additional 288,000 in direct funding. Again, that's those local contracts I was talking about. We also are a support entity for, well, it was Black Hills Community Economic Development. But now they've changed to Ally Dakota. They've expanded. And so now they've got a loan portfolio of over 101 million and 249 loans, 109 retained jobs and 40 new jobs created through those programs. Again, we don't, our, our staff don't do that work, but we are a partner of them. We share space with them. And oftentimes, we're, you know, we're assisting in, in ways, you know, when needed. So we also completed one mitigation plan and secured funding for two additional. Those are specific to counties in our region. Four cities and counties were assisted with land use planning or municipal ordinance assistance, creation or revisions. Two communities and counties were assisted with comprehensive planning. We do, we assist with SAM, System for Award Management, getting people or entities enrolled in that if they have never been enrolled or if they've expired. And then, yeah, Davis Bacon Administration is a large part of what we do. We have 86 different separate, or separate contracts right now that we're administrating. And that's a requirement of, of typically federal funding kicks that in. So, yeah, I guess since 2000, the year 2000, we've assisted our membership in obtaining 658,641,907 of outside funding. And this represents about $3,332 for every person in our region based off the 2020 census. It also results on an overall return on investment for our region of $347 to one. This page is our alphabet soup. I forget how I talk in acronyms until I hire new staff. And they look at me and they're like, what did you just say? So again, this will help you read the report if you're unfamiliar with some of these acronyms. These are utilized throughout the report and also common, just common acronyms that we use. It helps shorten the report and be able to fit things into small spaces. So, and that's just a difference of programs and entities that we work with. All right, so I have all the counties. I'm going to skip down to Pennington County. All right, so I have all the counties. I'm going to skip down to, uh, Pennington County. These, oh, there's another error. I'll get that fixed. So for each county, there is a section, uh, the top section represents the applications we've done just in this last year for your county. Well, actually, the very top section talks about the return on investment, and I know this is Ron's favorite part of the whole report because, um, because it's interesting. So assistance obtained is any grant or loan dollars that we've, um, assisted with an application for. And in the last twenty-four years, um, over three hundred and eleven million dollars has been secured. It's all, actually, almost three hundred and twelve million dollars has been secured in Pennington County for projects, community development, and that can be water and wastewater infrastructure. It can be community facilities. Yeah, it's pretty much limited to those things. And then the total dues, I just want you to understand, that also represents other dues-paying members in your county. So Pennington County has not paid us eight hundred and four thousand. Pennington County, Rapid City, and Box Elders dues, I think, show up in that one, too, because they're mostly in Box Elder, even though, or in Pennington, even though they're partly in need as well. So total, that's what's been paid, and then we just divide those numbers to get your return on investment. So here's our list of projects. I will just, um, point out that there are some projects that say pending. That's because this report ended. So we had written an application, but it hadn't been awarded yet. We now know they've been awarded. But, um, to keep it very clear and to keep, you know, the cutoff at the, the end of the year, we don't include those if they were pending at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-four. We'll include those in the twenty twenty-five report. So Hill City's been funded, um, you know, Keystone's been funded. These were all ones that went in December thirty-first and were subsequently awarded by the Board of Water and Natural Resources in March. And then there are a couple that you, you might notice are actually private businesses. This program has actually been canceled, so I don't anticipate any of those will be awarded. But I wanted to at least show that, you know, our office, you know, it, it requires time for us to do that work. At, at the time that we were doing that work, we were being paid to do that work through USDA, through a separate contract. That contract has been canceled, and I think last time I was here, I talked about, you know, that was sixty thousand dollars a year, um, for our office. So we are impacted a little bit by the cuts or, you know, the, the shaking up at, at the federal level. But we still anticipate that we will cash flow this year, so no issues there. So a total of eighteen million dollars was secured for your county just in twenty twenty-four. The bottom is the work activities. So we do a lot of things that don't result in, um, secured funding. Uh, we get a lot of requests for assistance through SAM, Davis Bacon Registration, and sometimes just technical. If, if there's departments of a county or of a city or, you know, a township or an HOA or something that just needs an extra set of hands, maybe they just need us to run a census report or need us to print some maps or, um, our fire departments, you know, we can give them, if they just need, uh, some large maps for the wall, things like that. They, they require us time. We do the administration of, so all of the dollars that we secure for the region, we also administrate most of those as well. So that includes things like quarterly reports, um, and other technical assistance that are then submitted to the federal government or state government. So that's really it for Perkins County as far as the annual report. I'll, I'll take questions on the annual report, but I do have a, a couple other comments about our alphabet soup page. If, if there aren't any specific about the report.
Go ahead. Commissioners, do you have any questions on?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jennifer, can you expand a little bit? Uh, you said Black Hills Community Economic Development has merged with another fund and became Ally Dakota Development. Who are some of the principal players in that, and what was the other fund? Did the, the Kiravich Foundation, is that part of this whole program? Is that separate?
That is not. So the Small Business Development Center is the organization, they are federally funded, that helps with small businesses, mostly developing a business plan that will work in order to be eligible. So some of these revolving loan funds are, um, either federally backed or the, or the fund actually comes from the federal government. And so, you know, the, the, the small, the Black Hills Community Economic Development has been providing small business loans for, for many years. And I guess this is a marketing piece. If there's people out there that are trying to, to start a business, their, their intent is not to compete with banks. Um, it's, it's for some of those that maybe don't have enough collateral or need more working capital, things like that. Um, there's, it's a federal program, so there's a lot of requirements. The merge that- Sorry, took place, um, was, there was a entity, another council of governments that was on the eastern part of the state, and their loan officer or loan person that was doing that work, um, ended up merging with, um, Black Hills Community Economic Development. Black Hills Community Economic Development always provided statewide. They were always able to write loans statewide. But I think having, having just, um, one, if you can build your loan portfolio, you have a little bit more ability. You're a larger tool that works for, um, being able to provide a little larger loans. And then just having the extra set of hands, uh, to be able to, um, service those loans. So, um, the, the main person in our, or the person that's in charge of that in our building is Fran White, and I can get you in contact with her if you have specific questions about their-
Oh, I, I know Fran. I just wondered, uh, relative to Black Hills Community Economic Development. You know, Liz May was, uh, head of that. I just wondered if someone that, some of those personnel shifted over.
They, they did recently, um, have somebody leave, and they've got a position open. But for the most part, they kept all, they retained all of their positions, and I think they added two more with, I could, I could be wrong about that, with Ally as they came together to, to merge as one.
Because, uh, Black Hills Community Economic Development, didn't they kind of control the twenty million dollar purse that, uh, was going to get distributed to the different cities in the Black Hills? Because was it Greg Litten? I can't remember who we were talking with, but just wondered how that all played out now with this merge.
I feel like that is a question that would be better directed to Fran. Um, I'm not that involved with what they do as far as where their numbers are and, and who all they're working with. So I apologize. And I can actually, if it's confusing to have that in our report, um, at one point, my position oversaw all of that. When I came on, I recognized right away that the individuals that were, um, like the directors for those programs, they had more experience than me. I don't, I don't know what I could have offered as far as leadership for them. And so now it's more of a shared space and, again, shared helping hands if we need it and maybe marketing each other's, uh, services that are provided a little bit. But for the most part, I'm, I'm not involved with what they do on a-
So did the change in administration have any impact on, uh, your department?
Theirs? Um, I, I think that's still all in flux, and I, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, I don't know if you all looked at the president's skinny budget proposal. I've gone through it because I wanted to see, at least, um, from the administration, what their ideas are as far as funding. And, you know, what are, because they given, they given a, a description of if they're cutting something, the reason why they're cutting that. And I wanted to see how all of the programs that, you know, we work with on a regular basis will be impacted. So when it came out, I did take a look, and there's, there's much more of these that we work with, but there are a few that I felt like might be important for you all to know are changing. One of them is the Clean Water S R F program. The explanation behind cutting that, and it was two point six billion dollars, and again, this is, this all has to be worked through, um, Congress. So this, none of this is, don't take this as it's all going away. The administration has decided that there's maybe a better way to do government, and, you know, maybe we agree or disagree with that. But the reason for the cuts in that program were that they saw it as a duplication of the USDA, uh, wet programs, water and environmental programs. And, um, I don't know if other states weren't being responsible with that, but I will say, when you look at our return on investment, what we've done in, in your county specifically and in our region, we utilize those programs on a regular basis, and they're doing great things in our region. So, um, I want people to be aware of that. A lot of times, the decision-makers decide to cut programs or cut things simply because they didn't know that it was making an impact. They didn't know how it was being utilized. And in our state, I would say, um, it is one of the main programs we work with for, uh, sanitary sewer infrastructure rehabilitation, um, you know, creation, expansion. And so, um, that is one that if, if the federal government decides it shouldn't be administered at the, at the federal level, we're going to need to do a lot of work. There's going to be a lot of work that is going to need to take place for that to be, um, something that our state keeps around. Another one that will go away is the Community Development Block, or is being proposed to be cut, I should say, is this Community Development Block Program or Block Grant Program. We do a lot of work. That is one of our only grant programs for a community facility, um, in our state. The USDA programs used to have their community facilities loan and grant program, but for many years, there's really not been any grant available in those programs. And so, um, we would often pair the Community Development Block Grants with the USDA loan, and together, it's, then it makes a project either achievable or not. And so, again, I, I feel like if there's these decisions being made, and if you're in a position of having influence, it might be worth it to reach out to the, the council of governments across the state because we're all utilizing these programs, and I haven't, I haven't yet seen a project funded in our state that was irresponsible or something that shouldn't have been constructed or built. They all have community develop, or community benefits, and they're, they're doing great things in our state. So, um, again, that's another one where I feel like if it has to be rearranged and done differently, I'm all about efficiency, but at the same time, if they completely go away, just know that there's going to be less tools to do some of those projects in our region. E D A, so this one, uh, their comments weren't, weren't kind. And it starts out as E D A programs are not simply wasteful. They have been hijacked and operate on a spending earmarks for politicians, favored projects, et cetera, et cetera. That may be true in other states, but I will say the, the Economic Development Administration does provide our office seventy thousand a year. And while that's not a huge amount, it's enough for us to continue doing the work that we do here for, to promote economic development. And also, just to, uh, it's more about, um, all of those steps that are needed to, for communities to flourish. Water and sewer are a big part of that. You know, what's your house worth if there's no water, if there's no clean drinking water? And part of that is, if you don't keep the sanitary sewer stuff collected and, and treated, you know, you may impact your drinking water. So, um, again, that basic infrastructure is really important for all of those other things that are needed for flourishing communities. So, um, there is one other one. The rail is expected to get a huge increase. And so you may or may not be familiar with the, um, proposal or the people that are supportive of bringing Amtrak through our state. If you're supportive of that, um, this might be a good time to do a sign-on letter and saying that you're supportive of that as a county commission as a whole, um, because that is one of the areas that we, that is proposed to receive quite a bit of funding. And so if you feel like in our state, uh, bringing the rail lines up to speed, up to par, we haven't done a lot of improvements to rail in our state, and it currently doesn't meet the, uh, specifications for passenger rail, then, you know, now might be a good time. I've got an example of a sign-on letter. If you want to see it, I can provide it to you all, and you can, oops, you can make that decision. I don't expect, I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to influence you one way or another, but if you want it, I can provide it.
So who's the go-to person? Ben? Is it Ben?
No, Dan Bilka.
Yes.
That, uh-
Thank you.
Yeah, I've responded quite a, I've sent letters, and so, you know, it's a, it's a large step, just like Missouri Water. But, you know, he's out there, and he's really getting involved, and, uh, that'd be pretty, pretty wild if we could at least get some of that rail started and, uh, heading from Sioux Falls to the Rapid City area and then down the Cheyenne, I assume.
Yeah, and I mean, if it's something that the federal administration supports, then, um, and if that's where the money at the federal level is going to be directed, even if some of these other programs, if water and sewer and, and economic development become more backburner, well, if that's where the money is going to be, then maybe we ought to do something to bring those dollars to South Dakota and make the improvements that are needed while it's available.
Well, as a note of interest, there's only two states that don't have rail. South Dakota's one. So that's why they're getting some traction.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So Jennifer, uh, serving on the, since I get to serve on the, uh, State Water and Natural Resources Board, I also get to see, uh, the projects that you submit. And, uh, I think the DA and our staff would agree with me that, you know, the documentation that you provide is just absolutely the best. The planning districts all do a great job in serving those communities and counties uh, with the projects that they're proposing to come through, like the board that I sat on. And, uh, so it makes it very easy to understand, uh, how the workings happen. And I know that we're going to probably have to make some, some adjustments because of some changes at the federal level, and I'm expecting that our, at our meeting, our Water Natural Resources Board meeting in June, that we'll probably be hearing some of those adjustments that'll need to be made for the future. As far as the rail is concerned, uh, I would like to see a copy of that draft. Uh, I think it's, uh, very important for Pennington County to be a part of that, to sign on to that. And, uh, I just recently met with Mr. Bilka. In fact, he's going to be at our conference this week here uh, for the, uh, western interstate region of, of counties also, and will be making a presentation there. But, uh, I think that's critical as far as, especially for ag in the future, of having that rail, uh, being able to provide, uh, the capacity to haul livestock, grain products, et cetera, uh, through here, and that, what that means is just simply, you know, building up that, that rail to withstand, uh, that type of pressure. So, uh, I think that's a, a good point and good for us.
So I would like to go back to, obviously, rail is a little bit outside what I'm used to. But your comments on the, um, you know, water and sewer through Board of Water and Natural Resources are really important. Working for the planning districts for, I'm in my nineteenth year now. We are in a unique position to be able to see what works and what doesn't work. And I'm a little sad that, um, the idea is the USDA programs are doing all the things that the S R F program are. Uh, it used to be we utilized those pretty equally. But changes at the federal level to the USDA programs in the water and sewer side of that about ten years ago wreaked havoc on those programs and made them basically, they're very hard to use. They're not user-friendly for the poorest, smallest, most needy communities. They've, and, and the biggest thing that they changed was they used to do the same thing the S R F programs did, where they, um, once you were awarded the funding, you could start drawing to pay some of your preliminary expenses. So engineering, legal, um, anything else. And they locked all that up because of the irresponsibility, I think, of, in other states that was taking place. And now they're required to go and get bridge financing and then, uh, construction financing. And then at the end of it, once the project is built, they're allowed to, you know, close out their loan with USDA, and on we go. That one change, and I don't know who made that decision, but that one change changed it from our, like I said, smallest, most rural, most needy communities, being able to utilize that program, to essentially not being able to touch it. If they could go get the money from a bank already, they would. Nobody would deal with the federal requirements because they're a big, they're a lot. So, um, and, and, yeah, I guess, you know, kind of going back to factors that contribute to efficiency, you know, we get to see what's efficient and what's not because we work with all of these programs across the board. And, um, one of the things that makes our office so efficient is we have trained staff. We retain the institutional knowledge, so there's a proper handing off of the baton when somebody leaves. We, we still continue to keep that knowledge. And the other thing is accountability. If I'm not doing my job or getting it done, you all can come and say, we, we're going to find somebody else. So we have this, uh, local accountability that requires us to get things done. And the last thing I want is a call from one of my Board of Directors saying, hey, so-and-so said you missed a deadline. So we work really hard to make sure that we have trained staff and that we're efficient, um, and that we're doing all those things that you need us to do. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Dur, did you have something to add, or?
Yeah. So a couple of questions.
So, a couple of questions, and then kind of follow up what, we already know you do a great job. So, I've worked with you on projects before, and, yeah, I don't know anybody better. So, with the federal budget cuts, one, so what you just outlined and what some of those cuts would look like, and that potential funding, can you send that information to Mr. Ned?
Yeah, I'll send, it won't be marked, but I'll send the link to the, the President's skinny budget, and I'll tell him which pages, once I'm concerned.
All right. Skinny budget, all right. And the rail, yeah, I think we've actually supported that before via either a resolution or a letter, but it's always good to put that out there. And, when you're looking at some of these budget cuts, and now your office is funded, and so if you look at the trickle-down, so if they're going to cut some of these programs, then when you do work in the community on some of those federally funded and/or trickle-down through the state, are you anticipating, then, what that loss of revenue would be to your budget?
Yes, I am. So far, there haven't been cuts to the clean water. We have a cooperative agreement with the State Department of Ag and Natural Resources. We're essentially their boots on the ground. We're the, the local entity that can meet with people immediately and help them through the process. I would anticipate that if they see cuts, they will also, you know, pass those on to us, but really, it's per project. So, it's not like they're giving us a big old, it's like if you do a project, you're, there's some compensation for application work, Davis Bacon Administration, and the rest of the administration of the project. So, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect them to continue to be able to pay us if they're seeing cuts, but I think when, when you're up against, you know, change, there's an opportu, there's always an opportunity, and what I see is an opportunity of, this would be a really good time for state, federal, local, to really lean into the knowledge of the planning districts, because they've been administrating this, and many times, we pass that along to the state agencies when they're making changes, and we're like, hey, we can tell you, if you make these changes, your, your program's going to become either useless, not achievable for most entities, or, yes, we can assist you through it. So, I've already been looking at other services we can provide. I think there's still going to be value, if these programs go away, there's still going to be a lot of things that we can do for our cities and counties. Again, you just gotta, you just gotta ask. So, what is it you need? Where do you need an extra set of hands? If it's providing census data, if it's entering things into spreadsheets, you know, there's going to be areas where we can assist, and it doesn't require you to take on a full-time staff person, if it's, if it's short-term work. So, again, we're here to help, and I do anticipate that we will be impacted, but I have not, because it hasn't been cut, this is just a proposal.
Right.
I haven't gone through to see exactly what that would do. We already know we lost sixty thousand. If we lose the seventy thousand, we've already been awarded a grant through EDA for three years. If we, if we find out this year we lose it, I won't include it in my budget next year.
All right. So, I guess, yeah, my point related to that would be, when you come to the county for budget submission, and you talk about what the requests are, and it wouldn't be just Pennington County, it would be all local entities, and I'm sure you're thinking about that, if you lose one source of revenue, look at what might have to be supplemented at the local level.
Sure, and for this year, you'll, I mean, your increase is, it's, it's not much, and that's already been approved from last year, because they went to CPI, so I think it's two-point-four, two-point-five is what you'll see this year. So, we're talking a few thousand dollars, I think, is going to be the difference. Obviously, that's not enough to subsidize the loss of our other programs, and again, if it gets to that point, I'm going to bring in the board, and we'll do a work session and say, what do you want to see? You know, are, should I be cutting, should I be considering cutting staff? Or, is there other value you can, that we can provide to you that you would want to pay more in dues? And again, that's, it's pretty early for that discussion, but yeah, for 2026, you'll get a letter, probably at the end of May is when that'll go out, and it's, you're not going to see, you know, we're not, we're not making up the difference of our losses, we'll do that through local contracts. And again, I like the idea of the local contracts supporting the membership dues, because we give you a reduced rate because of your membership, but then we're still able to charge for things like comprehensive plan, or ordinance rewriting, or things like that.
Right. Okay, one last question. So, later on the agenda, under an item for me, we have a matter with the City of Rapid City and Rapid Valley, and it relates to getting a three-mile jurisdictional agreement in place, and, which has been lacking, and so, all the development occurring in, you know, Rapid Valley, everything's going to be going east, and we don't have those written agreements in place in cooperation with the City of Rapid City, and so I have talked to them, to their planning director, I believe it's Vicki Fisher, I believe Chairman Wyfembach, a couple of months ago, spoke to the City of Rapid City. Is that something, if we were to work on something like that, in the agenda, I've got a copy of an agreement that Rapid City pointed me to with an ordinance between Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County, and so, when you're talking about agreements and ordinances, is a three-mile jurisdictional agreement on planning and development and infrastructure, is that anything that you might have some input on?
We can definitely review it. I will say, Pennington County has a larger legal staff than any of our other counties, so I know it goes through your legal, and you've got great planning staff as well. If, if you want to send it my way for reviewing comment, absolutely, I'd be willing to do that. And same with Rapid City, they've got much larger staff than what we're used, you know, used to in our smaller cities and counties. So, I had, I did take a quick look at some of their other ordinance stuff, just last month, that came up on the agenda, and so I'm happy to do that and provide comments if, if I see anything.
All right.
From kind of like a outside perspective, so.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dur. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer, for the, we appreciate your positive outlook on the changes that are coming forward, and obviously, I'm not going to repeat what our commissioner said about the services that you do, we all appreciate that, so. And without barring any other questions, we can move on, if you, if commissioners still choose.
Just want to say thank you, Jennifer, you're doing a good job, your staff's doing a good job, just keep it up.
Thank you.
Yep, we do, we definitely thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to, and we thank you again, and we'll move on to item eleven. And this is just a simple need a motion for items from auditor, new license for retail on, off-sale wine and cider license for Putz and Glow. So, if there's no questions, I guess we can entertain a, a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Move to approve a new license for retail on-off sale wine and cider license, Putz and Glow.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. We'll move on to item eleven A, or is it number twelve A, I'm sorry, items from Building and Grounds, Director Dave Davis Purcell, nine-hundred concourse FFNE budget and spending authority request. So, Mr. Davis, you have the floor, sir.
All right, thank you, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds for Pennington County. So, similar to last week, Mike Iverson and I came up and, and got authority for the IT equipment needed for nine-hundred concourse, and then Cindy Chapman, my project manager, has been busy gathering some of the items for concourse that we will need for the FFNE. So, FFNE is furniture, fixtures, and equipment for that building. A little bit of backstory, when, when we bought that building, we do, we were going to utilize some of the furniture, which we still are doing. Obviously, I came up here with a request prior to go with new cubicles out there, but this is all the other desks, and all the other chairs, all the other waiting room equipment, and obviously, move-in costs, and then some miscellaneous items as well. I did put a contingency in there, just because these numbers are current, we will not be ordering all of this all at once, we will be ordering it periodically as lead times become available to us, so some of these costs may change, as well as the mover, moving in labor, costs associated with the moving, excuse me, that could get a little heavy, just depending on the storage items that we have to move over there. But again, the majority of the furniture at concourse is going to be new, outside of storage, and then just specific miscellaneous furniture that the departments have that we will be taking over, so.
Mr. Chair.
Questions?
Yes, you have the floor.
So, Davis, can you expand chamber seating? So, when I, when you say chamber seating, twenty-three thousand, nine-thirty-seven, are you talking like the chairs out here?
I believe that's what that is, yes.
So, we're not going to use these, we're going to get new chairs?
Correct, these are going to stay here.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a direct request from Commissioner Ross, connect.
So, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, you have the floor, I'm sorry, you have the floor.
It's all right. So, what did you, what did you come up with on the cubicles that were there, as far as getting rid of those?
Yeah, we, those were on the consent agenda a few weeks back to declare as surplus, and we have them on an auction right now that is live. We have not received any bids on those cubicles, but we have received, received quite a few messages of people wanting more information, so we're, we're hopeful that we'll be able to sell those.
Thank you. Any more questions? If we get a motion, entertain a motion here.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion, move to authorize Buildings and Grounds Department to expend up to seven-hundred-ninety-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars for the procurement of furniture, fixtures, equipment, and move in related services for the nine-hundred concourse county administration building to be paid from available bond funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Davis, and we'll move to items from Highway Department Superintendent Mr. Joe Miller. This is second reading ordinance thirty-three amendment, an ordinance prohibited unlawful deposit of any material which may be harmful to the road, including water, on any county road or county road of hideaway, right-of-way. So, this is a second reading, so once, this will be the final reading of this, is that correct, Superintendent?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, do, this, do you have anything you want to add to this, or should we just allow some questions to be thrown at you?
No, this is the exact same that you saw at the last meeting, so there are no changes to this ordinance, so this should be the final reading, so.
So, if we have any questions from the commission, or do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we move to approve the second reading and final adoption of ordinance thirty-three amendment as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Drews, and a second by Dur. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, first reading, we're going on to B, first reading ordinance eleven amendment, criteria for the installation, relocation, repair, or expansion of utilities or excavation within public right-of-ways under Pennington County's jurisdiction, continued from five, six, twenty-five. So, I'm assuming we had a reason that we continued that, so Joe, if you want to expand a minute on that?
Yeah, Chair, the reason for the continuance from the last meeting is, at the request of Commissioner Dur, some added language in there for the utility scale, renewable energy-type situations, such as Wild Springs Solar. I believe we've added that language in there. Commissioner Dur, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I read it, talked to Tyler, it looks good.
Okay.
Okay.
The only other change we had is we realized we had a clerical error on the detail on the open-cut method, so we added some, some detail to that, that would be the only other change. So, yeah, I will stand for any other questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from the commission, or do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance eleven amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is for the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate your time, get back to work. Item number fourteen, items from Human Resources, Director Carol Bancroft, and this will be an update from admin, building hours of operation study phases one and two, so Carol, if you're in the building, you have the floor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director, Pennington County, and so, I'm getting this set up here. So, the hours of operation, we wanted to give an update as far as, this was approved by the Commissioners to conduct this study, as far as the administration buildings' hours of operation, so we want to share with you as far as where we're at and where we're headed, that, to start with, I want to just refresh everybody's memory on who the research team is. When we selected this team, we purposely went with individuals who are not directly affected with the hours of operation, and so, we wanted to make sure that anyone who is affected by the hours of operation has the opportunity to participate in the listening sessions. So, given that, our research team is Davis Purcell, the Director of Buildings and Grounds. He's helping as far as collecting data, he also worked with putting together survey questions that are being utilized throughout the study, and then he's also facilitating some of the listening sessions. Jordan Neeb, that he is helping us as far as the scope of the data collection and the analysis, he's the Director of the Commission Office. Sandy Sortland, our Senior HR Manager, that she is also collecting data for the analysis portion, and she's also facilitating some of the listening sessions. Cody Wiseman, our HR Marketing Manager, he is leading all of the efforts with the communications. And then Alex Purcell, oh, and I should say, Cody has also worked very closely with the Treasurer's Office for collection of data, which you did see that in the last meeting when our Treasurer, Annette, did actually present a snippet of that information for you already. And then Alex Purcell, who is the Assistant Director for Veteran Services, he's facilitating listening sessions. Mike Iverson and Sage Nichols are support people, and so, Mike, if needed, will step in to help with some of the data collection, which he worked very closely with Jordan as far as collecting some of the utilities and IT costs and that data, and then also, Mike is helping with facilitation if needed. Sage is our HR Recruiter and Social Media Specialist, and so she's helping with the communications, as well as she's working as note-taker when appropriate for the listening sessions. And then, of course, myself is the project leader, and I am also a facilitator for the So, where we're at right now, that we have completed phase one of the planning and data collection, so you're going to see some samples of that information as we go forward. We are now advancing, as of this week, into phase two, which is analysis and engagement, and that will be going through May through July, and so, with that, this is where the crux of it is going to be collecting more of that data and starting to analyze it, but also the listening sessions, which we'll talk about in just a little bit. So, we still have phase three, which will go through July and August, which is the recommendation and the development. The goal is to have the recommendation ready for the Commissioners' decision-making in the August nineteenth meeting, or an alternate date would be the first meeting in September. Phase four is communication and planning, which, after the decision is made, that we would then communicate both to the community as well as to employees, as far as how we would implement any possible changes that may take place. And then in phase five, that this is October-December timeframe, but I do think that's going to be closer to the beginning of October, when we are moving into nine-hundred concourse, so that's going to be the driver as far as what that date is actually going to be. So, the data collection that has already been determined in phase one, just to give you a little bit more insight into that, is that the scope of the data collection has been defined, that Jordan helped us to do that, and then we started with the data collection from the departments, so the Treasurer's Office, really looking at the detail as far as number of contacts that they have, and looking at as far as in-person, by phone, et cetera. And then also, as I said, the community engagement with the listening sessions is, that was all scheduled during phase one, and we're now starting to actually conduct that process, and then the employee engagement also was scheduled during that phase one. So, the listening sessions for our community engagement, that tomorrow evening from five-thirty- thirty to six thirty here in the Commission Chambers is, uh, our first, uh, public session for this week. And then on May twenty-eighth, that we'll be going to Keystone to the Community Center, and again, uh, those timeframes are, uh, early evening, late afternoon. And June second, we'll be in Box Elder at the Community Center. June ninth, we'll be in Wall. June sixteenth, we'll be back here in Pennington County in the Commission Chambers. On June eighteenth, we'll be at Hill City. And then on June twenty-fourth, which will be the last session, will be in New Underwood. This gives you a good example of what are survey cards for community engagement, so these survey cards will be at the listening sessions if anyone is wanting to fill them out. But they're also, as you can see here in this first photo, that this is positioned in the Treasurer's Office area for anyone who is actually interacting with the Treasurer's Office to fill out those cards. And then, uh, as far as we have signage that we are using also. And again, Cody and those creating the survey questions, which was Davis, Sandy, and then Jordan also had input as far as making sure that we were getting good, clean data with our surveys. So the digital promotion that has been taking place, that Cody and Sage have been leading the charge on this, that our website landing page that we have out on the Pennington County website talks through as far as any of the updates that are going on with the study. And then there's also a link where they can click on to actually share their experience. And one of the things that we are asking for is that they would input their, their names so that we know and understand if there's something that we need to reach back out to them, that we have that information. So that is, um, more of a free form rather than specific questions. And then, uh, if you are on social media at all, you've more than likely seen our social media ads, these are paid ads, so they will actually be out there. And I believe there's five different versions of this that throughout the course of the, the study you're going to see as far as different information. So some other things that have taken place is press releases have gone out, there's been multiple ones of those, and we will continue doing that. KOTA has been really good about picking it up, and you can see some examples of what it is. South Dakota Public Broadcasting, as well as Rapid City Post, have picked up those, um, press releases. So the employee engagement, again, those are in session right now, we actually had our first one last week, our first couple of them last week actually. This has been very, very helpful to understand from the employee's perspective, and there are a set of standardized questions that are being asked, and the responses, I, I'm really pleased with what we're seeing, they're very candid, very forthright, but very professional as well, so the camp, the questions are not only asking, what are you thinking as far as what you'd like to see, it's also asking as far as help and assistance in understanding their work-life balance if there are any changes, but then also what are some of their suggestions on, on what could also better serve the public if there is a need for that. And then each department has the opportunity to meet and voice their thoughts, so we're not only focused on the departments that are affected immediately by any changes that may take place, we're asking anyone across the county that if they would like to participate, we've got sessions for them to participate and voice their thoughts as well. So our next steps is to continue the community employee feedback, and again, that goes through the later part of June. And then we will do the comparative analysis, we've collected the data, we just have to do the analysis on it for any other county and state governments, and as well as, um, city governments are in that comparative analysis. And then we're really going to put our heads down to analyze the data so that we can present that to the Commission with recommendations, and we'll have various options for you to consider based on the data. And then ultimately that the Commission will make the decision either in that August nineteenth meeting or the first meeting in September, depending on what's all on the agenda and where we're at with the process. So with that, any questions?
Yes, you have the floor.
So, here's my take on this. I pretty well know where I'm going to go, no matter how this turns out. But I think there's just, in my opinion, way too many questions. So let's just say, uh, number two, how many times do you visit Pennington County offices? Everybody but a few times a year. What do we do with all that information? Where do we go from there? If everybody says we rare, you know, and other questions, the same thing, and then talking about working on weekends, uh, to me, that's a little unrealistic, so, uh, I think there's just way too much information on this card. It should be, are you, do you want a four-day or do you want a five-day? There's, that's just my opinion, because people are busy, and I can see a lot of people, I just don't have time to fill all these out, I just... Um, I think we're kind of missing instead of four-day or five-day, that's my take on it. And just roughly, how much time and money have we spent on this, uh, survey? County taxpayer dollars.
So that's a very good question, Commissioner Ross Connect, and I also appreciate your, your observations. That as far as what the cost is, that I would say on an average that each individual is giving maybe a couple of hours to this, depending on whether they're doing listening sessions or whether they're collecting data at this point in time, so it's spread out across those seven individuals that are on the research team. As far as the, the cost of any of the materials, like the survey cards and such, that, that is in a probably about the two-hundred-dollar range for the, the signage and the, the survey cards.
Okay, uh, thank you Carol, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you have the floor.
Yeah. So, I was at my local feed store in New Underwood on Saturday, saw their bulletin board from Pennington County, and it was the information related to the survey, so I can tell you that it made it to Penning, or to New Underwood, so.
Thank you.
And which Commissioner attended your first listening session here in the room?
Commissioner Dur.
Thank you. Okay.
Which was greatly appreciated.
So, getting back to the engagement process here, and again, I'm just going to remind that, uh, this process was approved by the Board originally for you to go ahead and follow through on what you're doing, so. Anyway, I know it's a lot of work, and I'm getting back to, you know, getting input from the public, I know it's always difficult to get that feedback from the public, and I'm assuming your participation from the employees is probably pretty good, you're getting feedback?
Yes, we are.
Alright. Those are my only comments.
Thank you, any other comments? Uh, here none, thank you, uh, Carol, for your presentation, and we'll move on to, uh, item fifteen A, this is a, uh, item from Commissioners, this is something Jerry brought for, or Commissioner Dur, it's a traffic congestion Homestead Street and Elkvale Road. I think we're looking at, that's fun, look, talking about, I guess, opening up, I'll let you take the floor Jerry, how's that?
Yeah, so anyway, a few weeks ago I'd seen, uh, a petition that was online from change.org, and it listed Commissioner Drews, uh, myself and Commissioner Hadcock as decision-makers related to traffic congestion on Homestead Street in the valley going to Elkvale Road right by Timmons Market. So I think the last I looked when I put my memorandum together, there were five-hundred-plus petitioners in the area out there that were concerned about the traffic flow there. And it relates to, you know, that road, Homestead, uh, was punched through going west to Oakville Road back in twenty-twenty-two. That project was originally done, some of that infrastructure out there by a TIF. And, uh, you know, it's kind of getting back to the discussion that I've heard since I've been on the Board since January about coordination of efforts between development, between Rapid City, Box Elder, and how it impacts Pennington County, obviously Rapid Valley being the largest unincorporated area in the state, populous-wise, so. The, uh, the issue, and I went out, and again, you know, not that I drive Homestead Street a lot, but I went out and looked, and it is during the peak times in the morning and school, and related to, uh, traffic, I believe, of everybody going to work, but again, coordinated with the drop-off of the school out there. So I reached out to our Highway Department, to Brittany and Planning, I reached out to the City of Rapid City and DOT. And DOT is in the process of soliciting, uh, to do a study out there, uh, from, uh, the entirety going from sixteen up through that corridor. Uh, the City of Rapid City has just approved another TIF, I did talk to Vicky Fisher, they're looking at incorporating some of the improvements under that new TIF, and looking at some of that, and then talked to her about the need for some type of a jurisdictional agreement between Pennington County and Rapid City as we continue to see the growth go east. And, uh, anyway, she was supportive of us working toward, uh, basically a three-mile jurisdictional agreement. And I've got Brittany that I wanted to speak on this and talk about some of the issues that the Planning Department sees. And this is not going to be a quick fix for the people out there dealing with the traffic issue, uh, but realizing that this intersection does, is under the jurisdiction of the City of Rapid City. So Brittany.
Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Molitor. Um, one of the biggest, uh, concerns that we hear in our office from our citizens in Rapid Valley, um, is the fact that the, during the three-mile plating jurisdiction when decisions are made, um, by city staff or the city council that they aren't notified, so they're not aware of any exceptions, any deviations from requirements, or even any notification that, um, these types of developments are occurring. That's probably the number-one thing that we hear, um, is that they just don't know what's going on. That, and that they don't have any, um, say, so they don't vote for city council members, they don't do any of those things, and they have some concern with the decisions being made because they feel that they're not represented. So those are the two biggest things that we hear, um, from our citizens regarding planning that's occurring in the Rapid Valley area. We have, uh, the zoning authority and building permits, but any plating and infrastructure improvements, uh, we do not have jurisdiction over that. And I do know that some of the issues do also fall on, um, our Highway Superintendent, because then he is responsible for maintenance of the roads, or the roads, um, that are impacted by those developments. They may not be, um, internal roads in the development, but those traffic counts go onto our arterial roads, um, and our collector roads, that he is responsible for the maintenance and snow removal, um, storm water, um, storm drain maintenance, all of those things. So those are some of the concerns that our office has heard, um, regarding yet.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ross.
So one of, I guess we're talking about traffic congestion, and Jerry and I have talked about this, where does South Dakota DOT come in? Because ultimately, this right-of-way that we're looking, that looks, I don't know how wide that is, but all that right-of-way, isn't that, uh, in jurisdiction of South Dakota DOT?
Correct, and I'll defer that to our Highway Superintendent, that...
Because I think they got to be part of the players, um, also, with the city and the county.
Yeah, uh, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent, uh, yeah, the Elk, Elkvale, uh, sixteen B right-of-way is under the jurisdiction of the DOT. Uh, where the city comes in is, uh, Homestead Street on either side, after you get outside of that, uh, US sixteen B, uh, right-of-way. Uh, you know, the, I talked to Mike Carlson a little bit about this, uh, previously, and, um, they're, they're willing to do the necessary upgrades on sixteen B, but, um, the Homestead has to have the necessary improvements to accept tho- the improvements that are done to sixteen B, and I don't know that the city's quite there yet. Um, they're waiting for, as Jerry Dur, I believe, uh, stated, that the DOT is actually doing a study, which I believe, I, at least I'm on the, uh, study advisory team for that, uh, s- study, going from the interstate all the way up to, to Highway sixteen, so we'll definitely have some input on it from, from that standpoint. Um, but to answer your question, Commissioner Ross Connect, that's kind of how the, the DOT plays into, into it.
And Joe, could you speak to what, what opportunities exist within our jurisdiction to alleviate this traffic congestion?
You know, there's some alternate routes, uh, you know, the, the existing alternate routes today would be to east, right, and that's partially city going down to, uh, Twilight, um, and then kind of over and out, that's kind of, I believe, the traffic pattern that existed before Homestead was punched through, is, is the traffic would either go up and around to Timmons Boulevard and kind of get in that way, and that's kind of a, a roundabout way to get there, um, or the majority of the traffic would drop down to east to Twilight and then get over to Concourse or go down to forty-four, um, to alleviate some of that traffic congestion.
What about Anamosa?
Uh, and East Anamosa is not built yet, right? So that's one of the opportunities that falls, as Brittany alluded to, under the, uh, the joint jurisdiction, right? The, the city gets to plat that, um, and I'm not sure if that's in the city's annexation, or if they've annexed that quite yet, on the east side of, uh, Highway sixteen, uh, US sixteen B, um, but there is definitely some opportunity to get that stuff built to alleviate some of the other congestion.
I don't think Anamosa was in there, when they did that subdivision to the north, they actually waived the requirements for the improvements for Anamosa.
Shocking.
That was part of the development that's there on Reservoir and Anamosa, they waived the requirements for those improvements.
Mr. Chair. So we know that right now it's, it's a problem, and I guess the question is, once we move out the concourse, uh, how's that, uh, going to impact, uh, a problem that already exists?
I, I would say I don't know what the traffic patterns are coming to this building, you know, the Treasurer's going to be out there, which, uh, has a pretty heavy traffic flow from my understanding, but, um, you know, I, you'd have to do an impact study to see exactly, I don't know how many people visit the Treasurer's Office on a daily basis or the Auditor's Office, especially during voting season. Um, you know, it, it's going to have a pretty large impact, um, on this intersection when, when that move is complete. Thankfully, there's more than one way to that building, not just this one, so.
Yeah, Concourse has similar issues at that intersection as well. So those are the two intersections that would impact our move to concourse.
I'm, I'm assuming those will be covered in the, uh, plan moving forward to that intersection?
Yeah, the, the DOT is studying the entirety of sixteen B from the interstate all the way up to Highway sixteen, so.
And when that comment opportunity comes forward, we just need to make sure that we're inputting our comments and what we see as some of the issues out there, so.
Yeah, and, uh, and I can also request that, uh, Commissioner be on that study advisor team if you guys would like also, when that opportunity, when they finally get proposals and get the study undergoing.
Alright.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dur, Commissioner Dur, are you satisfied with that? Any more, any more you want to add?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. Is there somebody from the audience that wanted to speak to this?
Sure.
Come on up, please.
Hi, my name is Rachel Sankey. Um, I started this petition. I am a working mother to three children that go to Valley View Elementary, and it was an issue to me trying to get my kids to school at seven forty when there is safety and adults there to watch the children, it's not really an option to drop them off sooner. That leaves everyone in the valley, a lot of people going right that have twenty minutes to get from dropping their kids off, getting through that intersection and getting to work, so. Really, I just wanted to try to get something moving because I know I'm not the only one sitting at that traffic light, whether it's on the way to work, honestly, even on the way home from work, that left turning lane to get back into the valley, it's the same thing. I spend probably over twenty minutes just sitting at that corner throughout the week, and it becomes a waste of time and a safety hazard. I mean, I've seen people that are trying to go left, and other people are trying to be in the turning lane to go the other direction, no one knows what way to go, it's just an absolute mess, so. And I think that the signatures on the petition coming from over five-hundred people really proves that this is a really serious problem, and the support that we gained from you, I really appreciate you bringing this to the meeting. Um, I'm happy to do whatever is needed to also help out, but I'm happy to see that a lot of people agree that this is an issue, and I hope that we can do whatever we can to get it resolved.
Alright. So yeah, getting back to the safety aspect of it, yeah, when you're coming off hill field and you want to hit that left turn lane, and the traffic backs up there, it becomes a, much of a safety issue, and so...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, now someone's trying to go left to get off of Homestead, but someone else is trying to go left to get into, whether they're going to Timmons, Black Hills Federal Credit Union, any of those establishments, they can't even get into the turning lane to go left. And I know it was mentioned... And I know it was mentioned that there are other ways to get out of the valley, but considering probably at least seventy-five percent of those people are going right to get to the interstate, it's extremely inefficient and would cause just as many issues if people are then rerouting down to the one other exit out of the valley, which I can guarantee is probably just as busy in the mornings.
Right. And pushing that amount of traffic through a residential neighborhood is not a good place to push it, so.
No. Especially, I mean, there's little kids that are walking across the street. When we've got these car lines backed up, it's a nightmare.
All right.
It's not safe for kids.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for taking the initiative to get it here.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dur.
Yeah, Joan put in the motion, which was my recommended action, but I wasn't looking for a motion on this. I just wanted to bring the matter forward and then actually I wanted to get with you. And I did have a conversation with Vicki Fisher in that we go to the city and have a conversation about a joint jurisdictional agreement. I don't believe that has to be a motion. It's just a direction I would like to go.
Yeah, perfect. And I think Brittany's, we've been working on it a little bit, and obviously, you know how those things work. But yeah, yep, when I get back, we will definitely get together and we will move this forward. And, you know, the whole jurisdiction, the whole three-mile thing is something that we need to converse about because it does seem to, and we've been taking some of those under our wing, like the TIF up in Twilight Drive and that stuff to be able to get the needs that we need. And the city needs to look at these things for us too and say, hey, what does the county going to need if we're going to do this? So I think it's a great idea, and we'll go forward with it. So with that being said, I guess they need to set up for the planning, to set the computer things. You guys want to take a five-minute break?
Move the tick, a ten-minute break, Mr. Chair, Roskin.
Yes, Mr. Roskin. Thank you. Second.
Hello, everybody ready to roll?
Yep, we're back.
All right, caution. I guess we just, the commission utilizes speaker request forms. If you would like to speak on an item, please complete a speaker request form located at the bookshelves on the back of the chamber and return to the Commissioner, Director Jordan Neff, located on the lower right side of the dais. So we're looking for a motion to convene as the Board of Adjustments.
So move. Drews, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We're going to go on to item sixteen, Planning, Board of Adjustment Hearing's Director Brittany Molliter. Brittany, you have the floor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter again. Item sixteen A is a variance, COVA twenty-five dash zero 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 six, to allow a lot size less than three acres in a rural residential district. This property is located on the border of two Custer County and Pennington County, so that is the reason for the lot size variance. Sorry. Staff looks at a prong approach when considering a variance, but staff is recommending this one because this lot is actually three acres if you were to consider it as a whole. It's just that the portion of it that's in Pennington County is less than the three-acre requirement. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this variance to allow a two-point-four-seven acre portion of the proposed lot in Pennington County to be zoned a rural residential district.
Thank you. Do you have any motion from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, this is Drews. So if I might, since I was on the planning commission, if I might just give a little bit further explanation than what Brittany did. This is the first time in six and a half years I've been on the commission that I've come across this particular issue where the land is actually spread across two counties. And so the lot itself, or the land itself, is more than three acres, but it's not, it's not, or is three acres, but it's not three acres within Pennington County. You have to cross that county line in order to get that three acre. So this was a new experience for me, but I agree with the staff, and I would make the motion, but I can't make the motion after speaking on it.
Okay, thank you.
It's Dur's, so move.
I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Brittany, you can move on to sixteen B, please. Go ahead. I guess we're moving. Brooks, Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner, just agenda item number sixteen B is for a variance, COVA twenty-five dash zero 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 eight, to allow an unattached bed and breakfast to be located in the front yard. The applicant is Brooks Johnson, who is in the audience if you have any questions. The location is two four oh five five Naughty Pine Court. There was a correction on the acres to four-point-five acres. It was a typo. It is agricultural district located off of Naughty Pine Court, and there's no flood hazard on the property.
Okay. So I guess, commission, should we hear Ms. Johnson, or do you want to make a motion and we can hear from her?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just had a question. Can you go back so we can kind of see the, okay, right there, the, go back to the one before that? So the, how many lots are actually, if you were to drive by the subject property, how many lots are to the south?
So Naughty Pine Road is actually a dead-end road system. A bed and breakfast would still be allowed if the variance is approved because there is no kitchen. The bed and breakfast will also be in the front yard attached to a garage that is existing in the front yard, and it is an existing septic and cistern.
Have we got any feedback from the neighbors on this?
I had one gentleman stop in on Thursday afternoon, and he just was wondering what it was about, but he had no problem with it.
Because, you know, I sit there and look at, I've been down this. It's a pretty remote location, so, I mean, I really don't have a problem just because of the location and there's, I don't see any more development going to the south because that dead ends. So that's my two bits on it.
Okay. So the other commissioners, I mean, we get, I think the staff is recommending and denying it, but we can approve it with some stipulations, and I think that's probably where Commissioner Roskin is heading.
Yeah.
And speak to him, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to hear from the applicant.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, you got the floor.
Hello, my name is Brooks.
Go ahead, tell us what you've got going on.
So the current property right now, I just built a new home on it, and there's an existing garage. By all terms of the definition in the front, yes. Oh, yeah. So the garage on the left is staying, the mobile home that you see there on the right, I have sold, and they're in the process of moving it off. There's an existing cistern and septic there anyway that was in place of that home or for the home to use. But the idea here is, is the garage there on the left would be to build an Airbnb on that with the requirements that the planning commission or the department has put in place with so many square footage and bedrooms and so on and so forth on that. So it wouldn't exceed that square footage, and I've already been in contact with the fire, I guess, department on getting a fire mitigation plan in place on that as well. So I just wanted to go through this proper processes here before getting an actual, you know, building permit on the garage that's staying there anyway.
All right.
So usually, accessory structures are allowed on properties over one acre in the front yard. But the bed and breakfast just specifically says no, so.
And the lot size on this is how much?
Four-point-five.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dur.
I'm going to make a motion, the secondary motion. If the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves a request staff recommends, so I'm going to make a motion to approve with the three recommended conditions included. One, that this variance only applies to an unattached bed and breakfast in the front yard. Two, that the applicant obtain an approval conditional, an approved conditional use permit for the proposed bed and breakfast. And three, that the applicant obtains an approved building permit for the proposed bed and breakfast.
Second.
Was that because of the acreage?
Yes.
Okay.
To me, it would be because of the acreage and the remote location.
Acreage and remote location will be included in that approval. So any other comments from the commission? So we've got a motion. Do we have a second from Roskin, right?
No, Drews.
Drews, okay. So any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, so that'll be approved with the stipulations and the reasoning of the acreage and the remote locations, so. Thank you, sir. You're all free to go. Okay, item C, Appeal of Planning Director's Decision, Dave McConney, Merchant Ron Davis' agent, continued from five-six-twenty-five.
So this item was continued from the May sixth, twenty-twenty-five meeting in order for staff to discuss some of the options with the applicant and the applicant's agent. It is my understanding that the applicant's agent is here, and they would like to move forward with the layout plan and the appeal as requested. So I will defer to the applicant's agent for further discussion.
Thank you. That'd be Mr. Davis.
Ron Davis, Davis Engineering. I went to the county and talked to them about the supplemental housing or the additional house on two lots, one, two houses on one lot. And it turns out, even with this new system they've got, I'm not sure what they call it.
Amber, what that, what was it called?
Supplemental or?
Accessory dwelling.
What's that?
Accessory dwelling unit?
Accessory dwelling, yeah. There still has to be torn down, the old, the other house has to be torn down when those people pass away. So that isn't going to work for us. That's what I preferred to do in the first place, if there was some way to leave that existing house there when this is, when they pass away. But that isn't going to work. So I'd like to proceed with trying to get a plat done out there of two, two-point-three acre lots or something like that in a three-acre lot subdivision. So I'd like to proceed with that if I could. The issue here was access of more than forty lot, forty lots to the highway. Turns out, there's forty-one lots in that area that access the road. There's thirty-nine of them that actually use it. There's two of them out there that are double. They own a house and a lot, and there's only one house accessing the road. So we're right at the forty, and I'd like to go ahead and get that approved to be able to do that and then pursue the layout plat.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, you've got the floor.
So if we approve the two lots, Ron, would they, is there a minimum lot size for the zoning out there of three acres? So then we have to do, we'd be looking at two things, the forty-acre rule and the lot size.
And two lot size variances. And just for clarification, if you build an ADU and you have a conditional use permit, you do not, you can still have those two on the property. You don't have to remove either of them. The ADU is an accessory dwelling, and we have many of them throughout the county. So you can have the main dwelling and the accessory dwelling in perpetuity as of right now, when you have the conditional use permit.
I was told something different.
Oh, no, it's a seven-hundred-square-foot maximum, but yes, you can have it.
That's the problem. We're well over seven-hundred square feet. This is a twelve-fifty-hundred-square-foot house that's existing up there. So the only way we'll be able to do it is to plat it into two, two-point-three-something acre lots or.
Right. You could have the twelve-fifty-square-foot house and the accessory dwelling at seven-hundred square feet and have those with the CUP, and that wouldn't go away.
So then we'd still get to the same solution?
Right. So you could have one lot with those two. That's the only way our ordinance allows two dwelling units on a lot is to have the accessory dwelling unit that's a maximum of seven-hundred square feet with the CUP and the main dwelling.
So what happens when they pass away? Does that house have to be torn down?
No, no, no. Those two would always be allowed. The house would be allowed and the accessory dwelling.
Even if it's over seven-hundred square feet?
The house can be, the main dwelling can be, the accessory dwelling has to be no more than seven-hundred square feet, so the secondary dwelling.
Well, we're going to have a larger house for the son. He's a nurse, and he wants to move in and build a house next to his parents and take care of them the rest of their lives. And his house is going to be probably twenty-five-hundred, three-thousand square feet, I don't know. And this other house is twelve or fifteen-hundred square feet. So from what I'm hearing, the house will have to be torn down when the parents pass away.
Brittany.
You got me confused.
Sorry.
You throw that seven-hundred square feet in there.
Right. In order for them to have the two houses of that size, they would have to plat. There is an option that they could have another dwelling on that lot as it is right now, and it would be an ADU. But that's a maximum of seven-hundred square feet.
And that doesn't work.
So if they do the two lots, then they would have to have two lot size variances and then two variances for two oh four F for the, exceeding the forty unit rule. So there'd be four variances.
Good. So I've got a question for you.
Sure.
I'm in agreement with what he's trying to do. Tell him the best way to get there.
There's two, there's two separate ways to get there. He would still have to do the variances for the forty lot rule. He would have to plat it, and he would either have to rezone it and do the comprehensive plan amendment to a density, to a residential density, or get two lot size variances. So he could either rezone or do the lot size variances.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Roskin.
So I know this area pretty good, and I dialed into, is it Dave Merchant's lot?
Yes.
So that's number twenty-two on that. You got something highlighted in red. I think it's lot twenty-two?
Yes, it's right there.
Right above the word Louis, Louis Drive.
Relative to the forty lot rule, because this property, if I measured it, it can't be more than twelve-hundred feet, a thousand feet from North Peak Road, which is the main artery between Nemo Road and Highway forty-four. So if this lot was located way at the southeast portion of this we're looking at, I'd probably have a problem with it. Relative to safety and, you know, you've got the John Society and Fire Department located two and a half miles away. You know, I don't have a problem with splitting those lots and, I mean, that's just where I'm at on it. But that's my reasoning, is just because of the location of the North Peak Road for emergency vehicle access.
Our goal is to keep that original house there. This is their original homestead. They owned all of that land up there at one time, and they've been selling it off over the years. A few years back, I did a platform, and we platted three acres on the north part of this property for their daughter. And then they didn't leave enough to have another three-acre lot down there. So they kind of messed up, but they realize that now, and so now we're trying to solve that problem. And Dave cut all the trees down off of that lot, hauled them to Hill City, had them cut, come back, built his house and everything. So there's a lot of history there on that lot, and they do not want to have that house torn down when they pass away. I mean, it's a personal thing for him, but. So we're just trying to figure out some way to get this done so their son can build a nice house up there with the family, take care of his parents the rest of their lives. And we don't have any problem doing the variances and site, lot size or variances.
So either one would work. He could request a rezone or the lot size variances. Both would go to this board.
So this, what we're doing today apparently is just letting you know that we want to do all of that and allow more than forty lots or forty lots.
Correct. It's just what they're, what they're, what you're asking for is for us to take in the applications. We don't take in the applications if they're in, not in support of our ordinances. So that was the request in front of you. Part of this request is because by doing this, he's not spending money notifying all the neighbors on four variances, and then they get denied. So that's, that's kind of our process of letting you know what was, what's going on, what the request is, and if this board would support that without going through all of that other.
So Brittany, I have a question. So one of the, part of the process is once he sends the letters out and the neighbors, what, I mean, he could still get denied because the neighbors could come in and just have a real big issue with this, right?
Correct. There's always that risk, but that's why we put, we put it in front of the board as well, so.
Okay.
Without going through all of the notice requirements and the application.
So you're just trying to, you're trying to knock down one barrier that says, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't foresee anybody out there having a big problem with this. I mean, that's, they've lived out there.
I just want to make sure that you understand that, Ron.
I understand that, yeah, absolutely. Yep, that's the risk you take.
So is there any more questions? Does the commission have a motion or anything?
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm questioning the language on the motion. Do we have to deny this, or can we reword a motion that clarifies what we're doing?
You can reword the motion. You can reword the motion.
I think we can make a motion to approve the application process, is that correct?
To, you would make a motion that we, that the planning department take in his applications for the variances.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Hearing none, motion carries to move forward with that. So we need a motion to adjourn as the Board of Adjustment.
So move.
Reconvene as the Board of Commissioners. We've got a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We'll go to item number seventeen, Planning, Regular Agenda, Public Hearing of Comprehensive Plan, COCA twenty-five-zero-zero-three, approval by resolution. Oliver, and who would this, would this be? Brittany, would this be? Yep, you're right there. Okay, perfect. Go for it, Brittany.
All right, so item seventeen A and seventeen B are for the same properties. One is a comprehensive plan amendment and one is a rezone. The comprehensive plan amendment, COCA twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-three, is to amend the comprehensive plan to change a future land use from rural residential district to low-density residential district. This property is located off of Country Road and Eagle Road. If you look at this, they are, these were, were what we call developmental lots, so there's already two residences on the lot. There is suburban residential in the area. They are asking to go to low-density residential in the area. So staff is recommending approval of this comprehensive plan amendment because it is in harmony with, excuse me, the residential lot sizes and the residential zoning districts in the area. And Planning Commission did concur with staff's recommendation.
Perfect. So we'll just take one motion at a time on seventeen A. We've got a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion on seventeen A. Move to approve COCA twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-zero-three.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we'll move on to seventeen B. Motion carried.
Seventeen B is the rezone, CORZ twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-five, to rezone from rural residential district to low-density residential district. And like I said, this is in conformity and in harmony. And now that the comprehensive plan amendment was approved, it's in harmony with our comprehensive plan. So staff is recommending approval and Planning Commission did concur with staff's recommendation.
Perfect. We got a motion on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in harmony. Motion to approve CORZ twenty-five dash zero-zero-five.
Second.
We appreciate that harmony and we have a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Brittany, letter C, please.
Item seventeen C is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, COCA twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-four. You did see this item. It was for a lot size variance for these same lots. It's to amend the comprehensive plan to change a future land use from agriculture district to rural residential district. It's for Todd and Lori Hanson. The property is off of Highway forty. And like I said, it is in harmony. If you look at the future land use, it does meet those requirements, and the lot size would be three acres if it was completely in Pennington County. But you can see this is going to be, the lot size is going to be three-point-zero-two acres, which is the minimum lot size for rural residential district. So staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and Planning Commission did concur.
Okay, perfect. We got a motion, gentlemen? In harmony happening now.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to approve COCA twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item D looks like an extension of this.
Correct. It's the rezone, CORZ twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-six, to rezone from agriculture district to rural residential district. And now that the comprehensive plan has been changed to rural residential district, the rezone will be in harmony with our comprehensive plan. So staff is recommending approval and Planning Commission concurred.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve CORZ twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item E, Brittany?
Megan Telwich, Planner. Agenda item E is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, COCA twenty-five-dash-zero-zero-zero-five, and it's to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from agriculture to ranchette district. This is located south of Hill City, off, or, south of Rapid City, off of Old Folsom Road. The surrounding zoning and future land use include agricultural and rural residential. Staff recommends approval of COCA twenty-five dash zero-zero-five as the request is in harmony with the surrounding zoning and future land use. That is with the Planning Commission's concurrence.
We love the within harmony. So do we have a motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, we have a public speaker request for?
Yeah, yep. Okay, thank you, Mr. Neb. We'll bring that public speaker forward and they just want to announce who they are and.
Tim, Tim Herman. I live in Old Folsom, right across the way from these eight potential home sites. It's, to me, I don't want to look out and see eight mobile homes right across the way from my house. I don't want to see eight approaches because there's, it's not very comprehensive what I see in the zoning that they sent to us. I don't think eight approaches is going to be safe for the highways. I don't think it's safe for anybody, especially on a narrow road like that. So I stand opposed.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
So the county highway department has recommended that all of these have shared approaches. So there would be four, not necessarily eight, but that's not something that I can necessarily do through this process. It would be through the plating process, which would, this is being platted through the city of Rapid City as it's in their plating jurisdiction.
This is kind of crazy. This is county commission, county area. Why is Rapid City doing anything out here?
It's three, it's a three-mile jurisdiction. Kind of, you may have heard us earlier talking about a little bit of that.
Okay.
And, yeah.
So where is the three miles? I'd like to know where the true.
Maybe Brittany can explain.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
While they're pulling that up, could I visit?
Yes, you can.
With this gentleman, so, sir.
Yes.
Has the owner of this property contacted the neighbors, just to give the neighbors an idea what's coming down the pipeline?
Yeah, it's not. At least, we've, the only thing we got was a certified letter to my son-in-law. See, I live in a duplex on twenty acres. I would prefer to have, I don't, I'm not opposed to building, but I don't want to see eight buildings. I would like to see maybe twenty acre minimum. But that's not what's before the board right now.
Right.
So.
Can you, can you explain to them the comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan, what is the comprehen, you said it was in harmony with the comprehensive plan? What does the comprehensive plan require for building sites?
So when looking at the comprehensive plan, we're looking at land use within about a half mile. The land use within a half mile of this particular property is, or the future land use within a half mile. The future land use within a half mile is rural residential, agriculture, and it looks like a little bit of heavy industrial. Rural residential is minimum three acres. They're requesting ranchette, which would be five acres minimum. But the request outlines about eight acre lots.
So, Mr. Chair, my question would be, so the city technically has jurisdiction, the county plays part of it, but because it's in the three-mile limit, the city, the plating process went through the city, is that correct?
Yeah. So the, my understanding, based on Rapid City's comments, is that there was originally a plan submitted for this. That was, I think, four ten-acre lots, somewhere around there. But this request is slightly different than that one, so the applicant will have to go through and submit another preliminary subdivision plan through the city of Rapid City.
So if they want a building permit on these lots, then they go to the city because they're within the three-mile limit? How's that work?
Building permits would still be through us. It is only plating that that jurisdiction encompasses. Zoning and building permits, any special permitting process like a conditional use permit, is still going to be through our office in the county.
That's because the property is technically located in Pennington County outside of Rapid City limits.
Yes.
I'd feel better if the owner would have reached out. I mean, I just think that's common courtesy. That's where my hangup is on this.
So I, I got a question about why didn't the city of Rapid City send out notices to the neighbors other than this certified letter saying rezoning?
I can't really speak for the city.
Okay, well, see, if they all of a sudden say, we want low residential out there or whatever, and we don't have notice, how can we have input to?
Yeah, I think I can kind of answer that because our comprehensive plan covers that, right? Am I correct there?
Yeah, so if he came out here and requested lower residential lots such as low-density residential, which is a one-acre minimum, that's not something that I could immediately support just based on infrastructure and the surrounding zoning. So we, when we look at it, it's a, like I said, it's, or like the name says, it's a comprehensive look at what is in the area and what it could potentially support. But them wanting to come here and do it in agriculture district, agriculture is minimum ten-acre lots, so they still have to come through us for these zoning and for, like I said, building permits, which is why you got this notification from this applicant, is because they're going through a zoning process.
Okay, I still oppose the zoning. Because I, I think it should be, okay, I could support the ten acre. I don't think five acres. I don't think eight more. Like I said, the road approaches, might not be road approaches, but we don't have a plan that I can see and say, okay, this, this looks good. I don't oppose this. We just have eight lots, five acres, all along there. I don't know why they didn't extend the lots if they wanted to make more lots. I assume they own all the other land there. Where are they going to get their water? Are they going to have Cisterns? Are we going to have more trucks coming down to deliver water to each individual house?
Is, is that something they put in their plan then? Because I think they got water out there.
There is a well that's zoned agricultural, and I don't think you can convert an agricultural well to.
I do know when, yeah, they, they've got water rights out there, I know for sure. So I don't know if they're getting pumped in through Rapid Valley Water, Water District, because I know they have water rights out there when they purchase that land. I'm not real familiar with that.
Mr. Chair, I got a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Megan, Megan, can you point out the lot that this gentleman lives on?
So you can use the mouse. Is it one of these lots?
I believe, okay, is that Dawkins Road up there?
Up here.
Okay.
So here's Dawkins.
Okay.
And then it continues and it deadends right there.
See, down a little further, you see that? One more, right there. There's where I live.
How big, how big of a lot is that, sir?
Nineteen-point-nine-seven acres.
Okay. So if they went ahead and did these plat, or plat like they're proposing, then you'd probably have two lots right across from you, right?
Probably.
Directly across from you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
We're on E, correct?
Correct.
We are on E, or?
Yep.
Yes, E, yeah.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to approve COCA twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-five.
We have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will second that for discussion, unlike Mr. Davis to come up and speak on this.
Okay, Mr. Davis, if you could come forward.
Ron Davis.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, so speak to the motion of approval of this item or answer their questions.
Yeah, any questions you have, I'll answer. There is water on this property. There's a well in that upper left-hand corner, right at the intersection of Dark Dawkins and Old Folsom. Dr. Lee Arland owned all this property. There's some two thousand acres, and it was recently sold to my client, who wanted to put these lots on here. We started out with four ten-acre lots. If you see that ridge line running all the way up through the property, we want to serve these lots with a water line. And that water line fits best right along the top of that ridge, rather than going down through draws. It's very complicated. So we started out with ten-acre lots and we were wasting a lot of property in there because of that ridge and the excesses to the water. So what I did is I changed the lots to these and made the back lot line run down that ridge, so we can run a water line down to each one of these lots. So it's going to be served by water. We also told the county that during the plating process, we're going to make that four access points. They're going to split each, two lots per access along there to limit the amount of access onto the road. They're five-point-seven-eight acres, just a little short of six acres, and the ten is allowed out there, so we thought that would work for us. If we had to, we could go to maybe six lots or, or something like that during a plating process to eliminate a little bit, but that's kind of, that's what we're trying to do out there.
So if you want the six lots instead of, uh, number of lots that's proposed, I think the, you know, the bottom line is that this gentleman wants to make some money on this. He wants to sell the lots and make some money. So if you did six lots, he'd have less lots, but he could just ask more for each lot and still come out with the same rate of return or whatever.
Yeah, financially it's probably about the same either way.
Would he consider that at all?
I think he would, yeah.
Well, that sounds like a good compromise.
We could replat it in six lots if that would help.
See, it, it would have been nice if we would have got a notice that saying, this is what we're, we're going to do, and.
They, they got a note. In fact, when I send my notices out, the county gives me the letters to send to the, to the people. I also include a map of what I'm doing, and I have phone numbers and emails and everything else on that sheet that says, if you have any questions, give me a call. I'll come out, I'll explain it to you, the whole works, you know. It's all on there for them. And I didn't get a call from anybody. At the planning meeting, there was nobody there. And here, this is the first time, but they were notified that I'm available. Give me a call, we'll explain what's going on. Because we haven't, I mean, other than that drawing, that's as far as we've gotten with the city now. We had the four ten-acre lots a little farther along, but now we're going to have to change that again. So there was, that, that's our notification. I didn't go across the street and try to find out when each one of them was home and meet with them and talk to them, but.
And this process is just a standard process that's out there?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's everybody within a certain amount of footage gets a letter. So if, as long as your address is a legal address within that area, you would get a letter.
That's right.
And they're registered, if I recall, so.
Yes, they are. Sir?
And I just want to clarify that this isn't necessarily, this request isn't regarding, you know, the amount of lots or the, necessarily the lot sizes and, I mean, kind of. This is to rezone to ranchette. So even if those six lots were still under ten acres, they would need this rezone.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, this is Drew's.
Yes.
So, uh, I'll, I'll support the motion, but the conversation that was just had with the reduction of lots from eight to six would be my preference.
Okay. Is there a way that we could incorporate that into the motion then? I think that that's what everybody was heading towards. Is that correct?
Unfortunately, rezones and comprehensive plan amendments cannot be conditioned. It would be through the city of Rapid City that, that would be.
Right. Otherwise, we'd have to just completely deny it, right? So we're just basically rezoning it, and then we're just going to have to take Mr. Davis on his word that he understands what we'll be up against when it comes back.
We'll have no problem doing six lots. That's, that's fine.
All right.
Okay. All right, so motions on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries, thank you gentlemen. We'll move on to, uh, F.
F is the, um, rezone, RZ twenty-five dash zero 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 four that was submitted along with this comprehensive plan amendment. And that is to change the current zoning to ranchette. Um, again, uh, staff recommends approval as the request is in harmony with the zoning and now future land use.
So Mr. Chair, I would move to approve CORZ twenty-five dash zero 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 four.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you, move on to item G.
Agenda item G is Plan Unit Development Overlay COPU twenty-five dash zero 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 one. And is to allow a planned unit development overlay for a specialty resort. Um, this is located, uh, north of the intersection of Rochford Road and Silver Creek Road, along Silver Creek Road. Um, we had last heard this item on the, I believe it was the May fifth, um, meeting. And since then, staff has changed the recommendation to denial without prejudice um, to allow the applicant to come in with more detailed, um, information regarding the floodplain and potential safety hazards.
Thank you, I think that, I was on the planning commission on this one and it, this is probably the best route to take at this moment right now. So that way, if we deny it, they can, if they decide they want to get all that comprehensive flood information, that they can bring it forward at another time.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go right ahead, you have the floor.
So the, the action that was taken at the planning commission then was to, at the last planning commission, which I was on, uh, was to deny with prejudice, which makes it so that they couldn't come back for, for at least a year.
Okay.
To bring it back forward.
Thank you for the explanation, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I just have a question, that, why would we want to hold it off a year if they could come back in six months?
Um, so is it a question on the differentiation between denial with or without prejudice?
Correct.
So if you were to deny with prejudice, like Gary said, they wouldn't be able to come back for a year, but they could potentially request the same thing in a year. Um, if you were to deny without prejudice, they could come back within the year as long as they had resolved, um, what was potentially hindering them. Um, and they wouldn't have to pay the application fee again. They would just pay the advertising and the letters to surrounding property owners.
Good, do you anticipate them working on the floodplain?
Um, from my conversations with the owner, honestly, I'm not exactly sure. I think that she needs to take some time to consider what other uses she could still potentially have on this property, which I do plan on having in a future discussion with her. Um, and then it, it is quite the cost investment, so she will need to decide, um, whether she would want to or not.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Roskin.
You know, I'm with the deny with prejudice and the reason why is just all the testimony in here and the actual pictures of, of the Silver Creek flooding. I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem with the concept, it's just a matter of being located in this delicate ecosystem. And if it's a year, I, I think it's going to take a year to get this all sorted out. Because how do we sit there and deal with every landowner in that area and landowners that don't live in that area that have very good points? And so even though it's technically, it's not located in the floodplain, we still, I still have to listen to these other folks and their history of living there and what happens to Silver Creek, as evidenced by pictures that, I mean, the pictures don't lie. I mean, the thing's flooding, so, uh, that's my, I agree with the deny with prejudice on this one.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, you have the floor.
I would, uh, move to deny with prejudice COPU twenty-five dash zero 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 one. Second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion carries. Item H, request for refund of fees, Jake, Jeff and Kelly Gorman. So I guess this is coming from planning also?
Yes, uh, good morning, Kelsey Roush Planner. Um, item H is a request to refund, um, fees, um, for a, um, building permit. Um, that was, that included penalty fees and, um, inspection fees and the building permit fee. The applicant is requesting all of the fees be refunded. Um, however, our ordinance does only allow the county board to refund the penalty fees. That total is four hundred and sixteen, um, dollars for the penalty, penalty fees. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Gorman are here in the audience if you have any questions for them.
I guess the main question is why do they want the fees?
The property owners bought the property after the square footage was finished. Um, a previous owner built the garage, finished the space above the garage and never re, um, got the building permit for the finished space. They only got the building permit for the garage. During some applications, um, it was noted that the finished space never did receive a permit. So they were required to get a building permit, um, as one of their conditions for their accessory dwelling unit conditional use permit.
So if they needed a building permit, they got the building permit, we did the inspection, is that?
We have not done the inspection yet.
But we will be, right?
Yes.
So why wouldn't someone want their fees back? I guess we need to, need to ask them, huh?
They are here, so you can ask them that question.
Okay.
Hi there.
Hello, I'm kind of, I'm kind of the voice from the sky. I guess I'm trying to understand what your, why you would request your fees back if you needed a building permit. You got the building permit and then we'll have to do the inspection, so go ahead.
So through this, this entire process, I, I guess the point was what Kelsey had described as well is we purchased this back in twenty sixteen. The garage that was already built and the, um, upstairs of the garage, the loft was already finished. So it was interesting to me and a new learning experience as to why I would be required to get a building permit when I didn't do anything. We didn't change anything, we didn't do anything to the already existing space. We just wanted to gain the conditional use permit for that space. So it seemed strange to me that I would be required to not only pay for a building permit, but also pay penalties on something that I had nothing, I mean, I didn't do anything with. And then we included the pictures in the request for the, um, reimbursement for all of the fees just simply so it was noted and clear that we hadn't made, made any changes, uh, from the time it was finished. I do understand that if it's an ordinance, that it's typical, I didn't know this, I'm not here every day to ask for this. But I do understand that, I guess if it's an ordinance, that if you buy a house and then you want to get a conditional use permit, even if you don't do any work to it, if it's already existing, you're required to do that. But I definitely don't think we should be required to pay any penalty fees.
Right, I, I, I know what you're saying, but the people that sold you the house would be required to, but you own the house now. I believe that's the position that they're taking.
Yes. And I think.
Now, now it will be permitted, so if you sell the house, that the next person won't have that problem?
Correct.
Makes sense, okay.
Yeah, and I think this has just been a difficult situation all along because we were told when we bought the house, it had a certain gallon tank for a septic size and then it wasn't that. So there was a lot of like misinformation throughout the years that came across and we're paying a lot of penalties and it's costing us. We're incurring a whole lot of cost, um, when we didn't know that.
Usually when you buy a house, you get a set of seller disclosures that describes anything that they're aware of.
Yeah, I don't know, the city even had the existing permit from back in, I believe it was nineteen seventy-eight, I don't know, that the septic size was a certain size, but then we found out later it wasn't. So I think it's just as years have gone on and.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, and we didn't buy it from the person who owned it or who built it, bought it from a second owner, so, yeah.
So.
So it's just been a difficult situation to gain this.
I understand.
Conditional use permit.
The commissioners have any questions on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Now that you presented these pictures, your assessed value is going to go up.
Please don't. The commission is already aware of this.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, uh, recommend approval to refund the penalty fee of four sixteen.
We have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to refund the penalty fee of four hundred and sixteen dollars. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, uh, any, motion carries, item approved, thank you. Thank you, miss, that's all we need.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, items from chair and commissioner members, the time, the members bring forth ideas. I guess we'll start with Gary Drews. You've got a lot of stuff going on, Gary, but you kind of covered a lot of it with a D, a W I R, but go ahead.
Well, under item eighteen, I don't have anything, uh, to bring forward at this point.
Oh, okay, I just, I'm sorry, I skipped over that and went to nineteen, but does anybody have anything on item eighteen? Or should we go straight to nineteen?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, last Thursday or Friday, I, uh, joined Elevate and we went up to North Dakota to Ellendale and we toured the Ellendale data center.
Yep.
Which, uh, I gotta admit, is pretty impressive. I mean, if something like that was built around here, it wouldn't be built in Rapid City. This facility is big enough with the, I mean, with the, the generators and the power plant and the substations that, and it, they're on three hundred and twenty acres and, and, uh, I think one of the reasons they want to be on three hundred and twenty acres because they, when they come in and they're this large, this one here is about four hundred and thirty megawatt, four fifty. The thing's going to make some noise. In fact, they, they had some temporary noise buffers up because not only you have a lot of other equipment that runs the, the cooling system and you got fans and, and I guess at night this thing makes a lot of, makes a lot of noise. Uh, so what I learned is that, you know, it's a large facility and if we have one that comes to this area and it's anywhere this size, they're going to, they're, they're not going to want to be located near a neighborhood or, uh, be in the city limits. But, well, it's a closed-loop system, they use glycol, uh, that's like an antifreeze. And I think it takes about a million gallons to fill all the storage tanks and all the pipelines and then they all go up into the yard. And, uh, so the question was, water, how much water do you use? And he said, well, that thing's up and running and they won't use some more water than a standard house for washing hands and washing toilets and stuff. But seems hard to name, that's what they told us, so. Uh, it was, uh, pretty impressive. I've seen a lot of real estate my time, but never saw anything like, you know, that's a four point five billion dollar project. They had one transformer in place and two more were coming and the one they had in place is the size of a thousand square foot house. Just massive. But, uh, yeah, learned a lot, it was a good tour. Uh, then last Friday night, I attended the South Dakota Mineral Industries Association annual meeting. Uh, we were sat with the Pete Lean table, but they, it's their third year since they've been kind of put together and it was, uh, representing the mineral industry, not only in the Black Hills area, but across the state of South Dakota. So you have aggregate and you got hard rock mining. Larry Mann, who was recognized for his fifty years of, uh, being an advocate and working at Home State for the industry, said that it takes about twenty-nine years to get a permit on an average for mining. I'm assuming he's talking hard rock mining. But one of the things, you know, when they sit there and you, you go through the process to get a permit to mine, uh, it's just like you're going from one administration to another administration and it's like a pendulum swinging back and forth. And, and they, they couldn't stress enough that, you know, even up on, uh, the level at Washington DC and the decisions that come out of there, uh, they just wish things to be a little more consistent. Instead of, you know, get to where they want to be and then all of a sudden go back to zero. So it was a good meeting, uh, and that's all I got, uh, under items from, uh, commissioner members.
Thank you, Commissioner Roskin, I forgot that you went to the AI building, that's, that's completely amazing. Thank you for sharing that. Jerry, did you have anything?
Oh, let's see, yeah, just on the alternative committee meeting, we met and continued to work on that. And, uh, tied to that was kind of, which is already in statute, but admitting the ordinance we had that have that utility stuff would go in our right of way for those larger projects. The, uh, um, yeah, so other than what I've talked about, uh, that I had on the agenda today, that's about it.
Thank you, so Gary, um, go ahead and give, then we'll go back to Ron and let him finish.
Okay, so, uh, so I did attend the four H extension advisory board meeting. Uh, we worked on their budget, uh, they had, the staff had already put together most of their budget and, uh, uh, the good news is they're coming in a little bit lower this year than they did last year by about five thousand dollars. Uh, at this point, uh, subject to change before the presentation, but I think it's probably pretty firm at this point in time. And then we heard from four H'er Lexi Foster, who, uh, gave us an update on her activities in four H was, uh, which was interesting to hear from a young person like that as to, uh, what they're doing in their, in their four H program. Uh, obviously, the, uh, planning commission stuff we dealt with earlier, Rapid City Public Library Board, I did not attend, that conflicted with the planning commission. And, uh, the W I R steering committee, we heard a, um, uh, a, a pretty, uh, full agenda from Gregory Nelson, the public lands specialist relative to, uh, uh, public lands throughout, uh, not only our area, but throughout, uh, western United States. And it was just a informative meeting, that's all I have.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you for steering the WI conference here. And I also forgot earlier to, um, add Ron Roskin into that W I R steering committee. Thank you for that too, Ron, and I'm going to let you finish with anything you had under the committee reports, Ron, and then we'll, we'll get out of here.
Uh, I really have nothing, uh, on committee reports, uh, Mr. Chair.
I don't either, I just want to say thank you guys for putting up with me today and being in Oklahoma. I'm here visiting my granddaughter, my oldest granddaughter's graduation in OKC, and so I will be back. And so that's it, guys, uh, no executive session, so motion adjourned if we need it, I guess, or if we don't.
So move.
Second?
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen, have a great day.